...the VUHS number six board, October 1st, 2018. Welcome everyone. We'll jump right in and start with the clerk's report. And that would include the approval of the minutes of our last meeting, which was on September 17th. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes of September 17th, 2018.
Second.
Okay. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to those minutes? Are you not all in favor of approving the minutes of September 17th? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions?
Just realized I should have stayed.
Well, you can.
I have stayed.
Okay. Are there any communications coming for the board? No communications. That would take care of it. Is there anything else for the clerk's report? If not, we'll move on to recognition of groups or individual visitors. I don't believe we had any visitors tonight. And we'll move further on, move on to consent agenda. Is there a motion to hear consent agenda? So moved. Russ?
Second.
Second. Rick? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are in the consent agenda. Can we start with finance, building, and transportation?
Yeah, we did meet last Thursday. What was the date of that meeting?
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh, September. And the first thing we did was approve warrants. And so the warrants from nine four, 2018, were numbers one thousand thirty-six through one thousand forty-eight in the amount of one hundred and fifty-two thousand, eighty dollars and eighty-two cents. And then on nine seventeen, two thousand eighteen, warrants number one thousand forty-nine through one thousand fifty-eight in the amount of three hundred and fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven and six cents. We also approved payroll on eight thirty-one, two thousand eighteen, in the amount of five hundred thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty-five cents. And then on the ninth month, fourteenth day, two thousand eighteen, five hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighty-seven cents. And then on nine twenty-eight, two thousand eighteen, five hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and two cents. So that was the warrants and the payrolls. And the order of business that we did is we reviewed the designation of the historic site, which has been, which the Grandstand now is in the state of Vermont. So we had correspondent with Devin Coleman, who is the state architectural historian. They had met on July 26th and designated that it is, that Grandstand are, is a historic site. We still reviewed what that actually means. And it's a little vague, but if we do not use either state or federal funds on that structure, then there really nothing happens. So we'll sort of see going forward what it does mean in our decision-making process on that structure. We also reviewed the long-term capital plan. And Frank gave us an overview of the requirements that we're going to face by the capital plan. And then there was an update on the ages of education, child nutrition program. And that was, it's called provision two. And it makes available a greater amount of food for a greater number of students. And that should have started today, actually. So it's the first day that we would be in compliant with provision two. And then on other business, we talked about the State Board will hold meetings tomorrow, October 2nd, and on October 27th. And at those meetings, they will discuss the WSASU Act 46 requirements. So that'll be of interest going forward. And the next meeting for the finance will be Thursday, October 18th, at eight o'clock in the central office.
Questions for finance? Thank you.
Motion accept the warrants or they are approved?
Yeah, once it goes, once it's approved by finance, then we'll approve the whole consent agenda, which will include our approval of that, of those. Russ, WSASU Finance Committee?
Yeah, work obligations kept me from the meeting, and so Anne took my place. I decided not to.
Don't try to drag me back.
Yeah, I figured you'd done some more time. So, yeah.
I think that was you a couple times last week, Woody. The WSASU Finance Committee met last Wednesday, 26th. We approved following vouchers from nine twelve eighteen, ten twenty-eight, and ten thirty-one through thirty-three, ten thirty-five, and ten thirty-six in the amount of eighty thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty-five cents. Frank reported favorable fiscal year ending in June. Special Ed ran a surplus, and said surplus will be refunded to the individual districts on an ABM basis. After he consulted a number of people, he's recommending we not do an oil pre-buy this year as prices are expected to remain stable or possibly even fall. The two significant changes, the state has mandated that all school district supervisor reunions move to uniform charter accounts by July of 2019. They're working on it, but no funds have been allotted for the transition. Also, the state has purchased new business accounting bookkeeping software that training will begin on in January. And conversations continued about the implementation and the financial implications of Act 173. And if I missed anything, Frank, please feel free to go for it.
We covered it well.
Frank, did you get any extension on doing conversion or?
Not at this time. We're inquiring as to if the pilot projects were unplugged by the state that were due to be operational in October because the state system wasn't ready for the disintegration. And so they've, they've reset that date to January 1st. And if that seems in jeopardy, then we'll reassert our request for a different timetable. Because it, you know, if this is the Burlington system and the Berry system have not been able to move forward, we wanted to obviously see a system that has a viable result.
Makes sense. Are you guys holding up in central office?
We're doing our homework and trying to, you know, be, be ready to comply with this transition. It'll be a, be a significant challenge.
Okay, thank you. Planning a policy?
Has not met.
Is the policy on flag that's in the works or?
As far as I know.
Okay, Teacher Curriculum Committee?
We haven't met, but we're hoping that we'll meet soon to get, start hearing some 1% fund reports and maybe some to be presented at the full board. That's up to, I guess Steve and Ricky.
Okay, how about the BAMs Committee?
The BAMs Committee has not met.
WRCC Committee?
The WRCC Committee met last Tuesday, the 25th. We had the Regional Advisory Board meeting, and I imagine most of it will be covered in Ray's report.
Okay. Thank you. And anything else for committee reports? Yes, not, we'll move right along to administrative reports, and we'll start with VUHS administration.
Do we need Rick's motion at this point?
Oh, we've got, we've got a full time.
So do you want a quick update on the SU Board meeting from last Wednesday?
Sure.
Okay. Well, something significant to the high school didn't need happen, which is that the board passed a motion to fund the Supervisor Union Office of Diversity, Equity, and Social Justice, which actually existed but had no staff or funding, in the amount of one hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. The new, the diversity equity, the diversity coordinator position with a new job description will be moved to the SU budget and out of the VUHS budget. A half-time position will also be added in both, both positions will include a benefits package. Firearms policy got a second reading. If you have any questions, please check with Lyle. The board approved a payment to the SBA in the amount of ten thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars for annual dues. The payments are now at the SU level rather than at the individual board level. And the superintendent review has been completed. Its results have been discussed with Lyle. And the board passed a motion to have Alice sign the assessment. It was discovered during the evaluation process that the superintendent's position had no job description. And one is being developed, and Lyle's contract needs to be in place by December 31st. And the board has authorized the finance committee to create and negotiate Lyle's new contract. I think I got everything very important. Yeah. Oh, we have warrants, if you want me to read all of those warrants. There are a lot of them.
Thank you, there's a lot of great stuff going on there. Hopefully, and I did, was jumping ahead without a, without a vote on consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
And he's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstention? Seeing none, it's approved. And now we move to administrative reports. And start with VUHS administration.
So it's been more than a little busy at the high school, which is good. We're fully into the swing of the year. We, this weekend said goodbye to our Swiss exchange students. They arrived on September 20th. We had 22 Swiss students with 22 VUHS host families. It's significant that this was the 40th year of the Swiss exchange. And Maggie Cassidy, who was in charge of the first exchange, was on hand to move this exchange along. The Swiss here did activities at River Valley Art Gallery. They visited elementary schools. They actually learned to cook at the co-op. They went to Boston and had a great time overall. It was good to have them here. Many of them remarked at how clean the school was and how they really felt welcomed by everybody in the school community. So it was nice to have them here. A couple of graduate news in modern classical language. Gideon May, 2016 graduate, is currently studying Chinese at Tufts University. He credits a lot of his ability at Chinese and his continued prowess with Chinese to VUHS. This year, he is studying at Chinese Beijing Normal University. So it's kind of neat to see our graduates using what they've done. Along with same lines, Jonah Goldberg, who graduated in 2016, is also studying in Dongju University in Shanghai. So he's spending a year abroad. So it's good to see our Asian Studies Program continuing to bear fruit internationally. Homecoming was this past weekend. We had a full slate of things that you could dress up as, everything from flannel day to tourist day and purple and white, did I forget a day?
Pyjama day.
Oh, pajama day. I did not do pajama day. Probably best for everybody. The, we culminated with a pep rally that the athletic leadership, led by Megan Pacheco, put on. It was a great event. For the first time, we did a four-class tug-of-war contest, which was a lot of fun. And it was great to see everybody showing their school spirit. Over the weekend, I'm proud to report that the boys' soccer team won their homecoming game and girls' field hockey also won their homecoming game. Good to see that we're having success out there this fall. Today was the first day of universal lunches mentioned before. I did check in with cafeteria staff. Breakfast and lunch numbers are up. They expect that there'll be a trend upward over the next few weeks as people get used to the idea. I was in the cafeteria for a couple of lunches and kind of helped the students who came up with one item to make a complete lunch. A little bit of confusion there, but in general, it went pretty well. Parents were very responsive, got a lot of kudos from parents in response to the email that I sent out announcing it. So it was good to see. So we're looking still for parents that can apply to apply because every little bit helps us later on with reimbursement. We've sent out another reminder to families. We're making some phone calls. So we really do need to have families that may qualify to continue to apply for the rest of this month. That's important to us. Last week, we had 19 VUHS teachers and staff members participate in the trauma healing workshop series with David Melnick at Lake Maurey. That's the first of a five-day workshop series. Two of those days are at Lake Maurey, three of those days will be here at VUHS. Those teachers and staff members are taking it for graduate credit. The goal of that program is to learn what the difference is between a trauma-informed school and a trauma-transformed school so we can actually use trauma-based best practices for all of our students. So we can actually be a school that's much more welcoming and much more opening and supportive of all kids, regardless of where they come from. I'll continue to update you as that workshop goes along. I am pleased to ask for the recommendation of Clark Dupont as an art teacher. He will take over the ceramics position that Allison Cram held. You recall that Allison Cram is our VUHS Technology Integration Person. Clark would be her replacement. We had 21 people apply for the position, and we interviewed four. We had two applicants teach an art class, a sample lesson. And Clark did a fine job, full of enthusiasm. So I would ask that the board appoint Clark Dupont as a teacher for the 2018-19 school year.
Is there a motion accordingly?
I, I move that we accept the recommendation that Clark Dupont will be the ceramic teacher for 2018-2019.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or extensions? Unanimous?
Tentatively, I'd like to ask on November 5th, as part of board education, if I could invite Jacqueline Penson, the athletic trainer, and talk about what an athletic trainer does. She did a great presentation at the Fall Sports for parents. It would be very helpful for the board to hear about what Jacqueline does with all of our athletes. So I'd like to ask that we tentatively schedule that board education. And finally, I do have an update about the flag policy. Lyle Holiday and I met with a group of students who expressed concern about the flag being lowered. Students were respectful, thoughtful, and they gave really good reasons as to why they felt the flag should remain in place. We did talk about the policy. I kind of took them through the history of what's going on of summer and this fall. One thing we did in response to their request is we currently have flying in the atrium of VUHS. We've placed the Black Lives Matter flag on the wall, and next to it, we've put the LGBTQ flag to kind of demonstrate that we're a welcoming school. As that evolves, we'll continue to consider additional additions to that wall. With the policy, I've had those students express interest in being part of that policy development. You'll recall that Ian Torre asked that we develop a policy that would involve a team of administrators, students, and teachers to weigh and vet requests. My plan is to bring together a group of students and teachers to consider that policy. Take the draft policy I submitted in May and then revise it and update that. And so I'll continue to keep the board apprised as that process moves on. Any questions?
Should we hear from Student Council while you're?
Sure.
Are you at, excuse yourself?
Yeah.
Student Council has had a good start to the year, and tomorrow, we're hosting the annual Activities Fair. So in the NPR, there'll be a ton of tables led by members of all the clubs at VUHS. Students can see what clubs VUHS has to offer and sign up. Yeah, it will be happening during blocks one and two.
We also have, are planning on going around to advisories this coming Tuesday because no school Monday. And we are going to collaborate with the YOTS team, which is Youth and Teachers Transforming Schools Together.
Youth and Adults Transforming Schools Together.
Pretty close.
You did a great job.
And so we are planning on doing presentations to every advisory we can hit for the coming three weeks to bring more awareness about how the entire student body can participate in school, student activism in schools. I think that's it?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we skipped over and backing over Mr. Lyman.
Hi, everyone. All right, well, I'll just review a few events that have happened. We had open house on the 27th, and it was really well attended, I thought, especially for seventh grade. We've moved to an online conference signup, and the links can be found on the main webpage of the BAMs website. We recently made a decision as a leadership team to make our fall conferences teacher-led and our spring conferences student-led for both grades. So, so parents are signing up for those, and they're really filling up fast. Pretty happy with it so far, simple software program. And I was really proud of the school that night. It just, it looked nice. The classrooms are really neat. The teachers did a nice job kind of making the rooms look nice and making parents feel welcome. And, and they were, they got a taste that they go through their student's schedule that they would have had that day. And they have about 10 minutes of class. They were getting a little tired towards the end, I think, so. I wanted to recognize, we had a student, well, student. He's a teacher, but he's also a college student, Nick Uleitis. He's from Hinsdale. And Nick is finishing his program at King State. So he's very early twenties, I would guess. And we needed a long-term substitute for Jessica Earp, who had a baby in the, in the spring. And he came in as a college student, hasn't finished his program yet, and taught May and June, and then all of September, and just did an incredible job. There wasn't a single issue in any of his classes. And he took over at the end of the school year with eighth graders. Well, they, let's see, they were seventh graders. Sorry, no, they were eighth graders, it was last year's eighth graders. And so the end of eighth grade year, and he took them over and did a great job. And then, and then came in with, they were seventh graders this year, and he was really great. We're excited to have Jessica back, but he's got a bright future as a teacher. Tomorrow morning, Chief Bukasi from the fire department, and I believe Mark Kerrigan and other members of the fire department will be coming to do a training with our staff on emergency responses. And so we're excited to have them. They're, they're traveling to all the different elementary schools and, and schools in the SU doing a little presentation. Mr. Parent had mentioned the free breakfast-lunch program, and so far, echo his thoughts. Seemed like more students ate lunch today, and pretty excited about that. And the last thing, I got a note from a teacher this afternoon from Team Draco. They're planning an integrated unit. Integrated meaning, meaning taking the four core subjects and kind of planning a unit together. They're going to connect with the Brattaburl Words Project. Brattaburlwords.org is their website. I don't know much about that, but they're going to be going on the 12th and 17th to visit cotton mill, cotton mill businesses, Holstein Association, Kipling's connections with Main Street, and farm and food production in town. So, so love to share that kind of thing with you because they're really good at planning those kind of cross, cross interdisciplinary units. That's, that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to the Career Center.
Sure. Last board meeting, I mentioned to you a couple of field trips that we had planned. New Hampshire Construction Days, which was last Thursday. Our forestry construction, automotive classes, visited that. And according to the instructors, the event was very worthwhile and included several new exhibitors. So had a very worthwhile trip for the kids. That same day, our FBLA, Future Business Leaders of America, traveled to the Big E and had a good time at the Big E while learning about business aspects of several vendors.
And Frank, you could pass those along.
They'll give you an idea of some of the topics, what they covered, and interviews that took place also during the Big E. And next Thursday, October 11th, we have a Women Can Do Field Trip that'll take place. We have a busload of girls from VUHS, and as well as ascending schools, Twin Valley, Hinsdale, Leland Gray, and Bellows Falls. They'll be traveling to Vermont Technical College to experience various technical careers. Everything from mechanics to engineers to extracting DNA. And special thanks to Anne Dorn, my guidance counselor, and Joyce Rathbun, my administrative assistant, for organizing that event. It's a great time where females get to experience non-traditional careers in the area. And if you want more information on that, there's a website, VTworks4women.org. Again, VTworks4women.org. Take a look at a few things that happened during that day. It's a great experience for our kids. And in our firefighting class, recently, all of the students earned certification in heart saver CPR, first aid, and AED use. So all the students in that class earned an industrial recognized credential for that, are certified. Adult ed offerings, the first one started last week, is actually second week, which is taking place just down the hall tonight. Fundamentals for Early Childhood Professionals. Has 12 participants. The class meets on Mondays and Wednesdays from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. And that's going on right now. We have a student co-opting at the police department with Chief Fitzgerald for criminal justice, which is going well. And with that connection, Amy Fletcher, an officer, asked if they could put on a workshop using our facility at the tip for basic physical defense for women. So that's taking place October 14th through 16th, three nights, I believe, from 6:00 to 9:00 also. So starting to develop a rapport with some of the community here, so the police, that we have a student, Evan Finell, co-opting with, with our criminal justice instructor, Sergeant Lee Lassiter. And Anne had mentioned the RAB meeting, that's our Regional Advisory Board for the Career Center, made up of all of our ascending schools, superintendents, principals, guidance counselors, board members from those schools, as well as some people from industry. We had that on the 25th, Tuesday, the 25th. Thanks again to Anne for chairing that meeting in Woody's absence. Went well, gave a director's report, basically the state of the Career Center, where we currently stand and the offerings that we have, and also suggested a few changes that I'd like to put forth and see if they had any objections to me looking into those changes for next year. Not that we will, but just to investigate the possible changes, dealing with program length. Couple of classes that we may bring back depending upon finances and early childhood education, a class, or whether we can finance another way through CCV and dual enrollment, Act 77, whether they could pay for part of that, taught for a class for that also. Bringing back what we once had was geometry and construction class, which was team taught with our math teacher and our construction teacher. So where the kids earn a math credit in geometry and also an elective credit in construction. So the kids in math get to experience how they can use their math, and the people in construction can understand why they're learning the Pythagorean theorem or sine, cosine, and tangent. Yeah, so like to bring that back. And the instructors seem excited and willing to do it. We have two new instructors. We don't longer have the instructors that were here at that time, when it was last offered. I also explained to the board state rule 2371 and the State Board Rules for CTE, which basically states that we are allowed to take 10th graders upon receiving a sending school request. So if they request to come here. So if they request to come here and they meet our admissions criteria and we interview them and determine that they're mature enough that we can accept those students and get reimbursement in the state for those students. Again, that's state board rule 2371 for 10th graders. And then we had, Ann gave a counselor's report with enrollment and a little bit on indebtedness. Basically, if ascending school students from another school besides BUHS owes us money, how do we get it back? So, such as a Chromebook, if they're taking a BUHS class and they leave with a Chromebook or textbooks, tools, whatever it may be. And so we had a lengthy discussion on that and a few of the superintendents were okay with Bill mentioning, why don't you just bill us? So I think that's what we'll do. So we'll bill the superintendents and let them deal with it rather than trying to hold diplomas or cap and gown, whatever it may be. So hopefully get some good results from that if we have to. And that was about it. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Okay. Anything from central office?
Nothing to add.
Just a question so we can start thinking, getting excited, budgeting process.
Yeah, so probably on the 18th, we'd outline the timeline. And, you know, it's still subject to state board's determination on our governance structure. So that would be very useful to know what, what the governance structural is, you know, as it relates to the, the planning process. But, yeah, I think on the 18th, we'll have a, we'll have a scenario of at least our traditional process. That's what we know.
So will the new, whatever the new thing will be, maybe it'll be the old, but will that be starting July 1st or what comes up next?
2019, yeah. Fiscal year 20.
And it's pretty clear that the three units that we primarily budget for are supposed to still be in place. So, and, you know, even ahead of knowing exactly how it's going to be set up, see if we're going to do a good deal of the budget. There's a few odds and ends that would have to be changed depending on how things are switched around. It's not like we, our hands are tied, we can't do anything.
Yeah, no, for this quarter, it's, it's probably easier.
Yeah.
That it from central office?
Yeah.
Okay. Ricky didn't pass anything along to me, the board chair report. And I think we, that's all for administrative reports. Is there any unfinished business?
I just have one question. I know Ricky mentioned at the last board meeting about finding more out about the career center, maybe on the 15th, and the admissions policy. So I didn't know if he still planned on that. I had asked my guidance counselor if she was available to explain that. So I don't know if you still want that for the 15th board meeting or not, or should we wait to hear from Ricky?
Well, that was under board education, I guess, which we generally have tried to do. I think we could probably, we just want to touch base with him and just get if everything's fine with that and then we'll make sure Bart knows to put that on the agenda.
Okay. 15th. I know ahead of time so I can let my guidance counselor know.
Okay. Yeah, as I understand it, Ricky's just away for the day. Should be contactable soon.
We can make it short.
Okay. Okay. On our new business, we have a one Act 250 impact questionnaire review and Frank will fill us in on that.
Sure. So the consulting engineers from Du Friends Group has asked the Brattleboro Union Board to consider their request for feedback on, on Act 250 questionnaire for the Red Clover Commons 2 housing project. And this is a project that expands 21 additional units on the project that is over behind Walgreens. And it's essentially a request to ask if this institution can accommodate the, you know, the capacity for additional students associated with the project. And we don't expect, there will be many additional students associated with this because this is, it is, I believe, for elderly housing.
Primary.
Primary. But there's no question we do have the capacity to accommodate this request. So I'm basically asking for a motion to, to approve the request to respond to the survey and it is in the affirmative that we have the capacity to accommodate students.
All right. Would somebody like to make a motion accordingly?
I'm not sure. It's a motion to authorize Lyle to be liable to sign the letter saying that we can handle. We don't see any negative impact from Red Clover Commons Phase 2 on our capacity to handle any new students.
Sounds good.
Got that, Sean?
Sorry, that's second? It was? Who was it? Oh. I can't tell him. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All for abstention?
All abstain.
Okay. All right. We move it on. Is there anything else for new business? If not, the next meeting will be, as just mentioned, on 15th of October, located in this room at 7:00 p.m. And anything else for the good of the order? If not, who guys through?
Mr. Vice Chairman?
I do have a question. I think Steve said that he was interested, unless I heard him incorrectly, that the athletic trainer would come on the 5th.
No, that was.
Oh, November 5th. And to.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
So the next meeting is the 15th.
Okay.
Mr. Vice Chairman, there being no further business before this board, I move that we adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you all. Thank you, student council.
Thank you for coming.